With the offering of the Pledge of Allegiance offered by Councilman Scott Barr. Please all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. Welcome to the 1,954th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. This will be a voting meeting and minutes of this meeting will be approved at the Monday, October 17, 2022, regular meeting. Ms. Nash, City Clerk, will you please take the role?
Councilmember Barr?
Here.
Councilmember Donavick?
Here.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember McCullough?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Vice President Toy?
Here.
President Jolly?
Present.
All members of the council are here tonight. At this time, I would entertain a motion in regards to the meeting minutes of the regular meeting held on September 26, 2022.
Some support.
So I'll give the motion to Ms. Toy, Vice President Toy, and the support to Mr. McCullough. Are there any additions or comments in regards to the meeting minutes from the council? I see none. Any additions or comments to the minutes from the audience? I see none. Ms. Nash, will you take the vote on the minutes?
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Present.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The minutes are approved. At this time, I would like to call up Chief of the Livonia Fire Department, Bob Jennison, for some information about some training that was conducted by the fire department.
Chief? Thank you very much, President Jolly, members of council. Wanted to come up and talk about a program that we had last week on Wednesday called Fire Ops 101, which was a collaboration between the Livonia Fire Department and the Livonia Firefighters Union. And I have some of my members here. President Scott Harity, Vice President Mike Othier, and Captain Brian McLaren, who were all there during the Fire Ops 101 program. Several members of council, other elected and appointed officials, had the opportunity to come out and walk in the shoes of a Livonia firefighter for the day. And literally walk and crawl through the smoke and get exposed to some of the things that we do on a daily basis, including a simulated CPR, a search and rescue with a hose line, and an extrication from a vehicle using the jaws of life. And the day culminated with taking our members into the burn chamber and showing them what it was like to be in a real fire. So many of the members, you know, were there and had the opportunity to take part in this. And there were a few that weren't due to other pre-appointments that they had, but we wanted to make sure that everybody was included because of all the support from the council and the administration. So my members have brought some gifts for the members who weren't able to make it to the actual event. Gentlemen?
Thank you, sir.
Wow.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Wow.
Can you guys put those on, please? Especially Morgan.
Put it on for the rest of the meeting.
Yeah, you know, I would have been there.
Thank you so much. I almost did my other job. Thank you so much.
Scott, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
So the significance of the colors of the helmet, generally the chief of department or the head of an organization wears the white helmet. So President Jolly?
Thank you, sir.
And our officers wear the red helmets. So thank you. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you for all the support that you give the fire department. Thank you to the administration for letting us put this program on.
Thank you. We can't thank you enough for what you do for our community and you're a resounding favorite of everybody in the community.
Thank you very much.
What we hear everywhere. It's fire department, police department, everybody else, elected officials.
Don't tell Chief Geraldi that.
Does anybody from the council want to comment on Fire Ops? Ms. McIntyre?
Sadly, I had to miss it because I was quarantined in Florida and then further quarantined by the hurricane. And it gives us all, I think, an appreciation for the fact that we live in Michigan and not where hurricanes hit. We know bad weather. We've had tornadoes. We really appreciate, we always appreciate all of our first responders. We know that for other disasters, Livonia has sent teams when needed. But unfortunately, I had to miss it. I did have the opportunity when we did it several years ago. And it is one of those privileges that you have when you're an elected official to understand in a small way what our firefighters, paramedics, everyone in the department goes through. And I'm sorry I had to miss it, but I know it's amazing. And it really does take your breath away, literally. And, you know, the danger that you face. And the Citizens Police Academy has a similar opportunity that's open to all residents. But thank you very much, Chief, and you know I would have been there.
Yes, ma'am.
But I know it's a phenomenal day. And I'm so happy that my colleagues who weren't able to do it in the past had this opportunity. So thank you very much.
Thankfully, you made it back safe.
And this is a treasure, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice President Toy?
Thank you. Chief, I just wanted to make a comment. This was my third one that I came out to. And it gets more outstanding with each department and each chief. Just outstanding work. I mean, I've had you to our house several times for my brother. That EMS is unbelievable that you guys provide for our community and the paramedics. Outstanding work. The car, to see that torn apart is unbelievable. You know, the inside, the fire part wasn't one of my favorites, but certainly got hot. But, I mean, it's amazing what you guys do. Now I see why they make calendars with these buff-like fire people. But anyhow, thank you, Chief, so much and to your team and to all the fire people. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. President, Chief, and to your members of the union, firefighter Harity and Othier, and to all the firefighters. It was a blast. Thank you for making that experience available to us. It was very eye-opening. Oftentimes, on city council, we're looking at packets, hundreds and hundreds of papers of items that we're voting on. We're buying this piece of equipment, that piece of equipment. And to actually experience it in a real-life setting, the jaws of life ripping the hood off of a car or the roof off of a car or the actual equipment that you guys use on a daily basis that keeps our first responders alive, that ends up keeping Livonia residents alive. It's an eye-opening experience and I was very thankful to be able to participate in it. The burn pit was awesome. I mean, in a matter of five minutes, we were locked into this chamber. And it was fully engulfed in there at one point. And the whole ceiling was on fire and you're sitting in there. And I've never been that hot in my life before. You have all this equipment on. And I just remember looking at the temperature gauge I'm holding in my hand and it says 650 degrees. And I was maybe 10 feet away from that fire. And to see your firefighters so lax and just like, this is just another day for them. It really goes to show the training that they go to and the level of commitment and dedication to their job. They're just, they're crazy. I mean, they're just really good at what they do. And it was awesome to share that experience with my fellow colleagues. Just to let the record show that I think Councilman McCullough did cry at one point.
Twice.
But...
I will not confirm or deny that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. But other than that, thank you again, Chief, for making that available to us.
Thank you for being there.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes. Thank you, Chief. I'd just like to say thank you very much. I also, you know, being a policeman for 25 years, I've worked side by side with our firefighters and I have the utmost respect for all of our firefighters. You also know that I was a Marine for five years and that I spent time traveling the world. And I'm very proud of our fire department. And I do believe in my heart that our fire department is the best in the world. We're very well-trained. We have great firefighters. We have people that are very dedicated. And, you know, you have my support and I really appreciate this. And you guys are the best.
Thank you very much, sir.
Mr. Barr?
Yeah, to avoid repeating what's been said, I'll just point out three things for the residents that might be of interest. Number one, as intense as some of those exercises were, the thing that actually stands out to me the most, both this time and when I did it three or four years ago, is the weight of that equipment when you're extracting people from a car. I mean, that was the most exhausting thing we did all day. As intense as the fires are, that's the thing that stands out in my mind. Second thing is that even, I learned, another thing that surprised me, that even in the midst of an ambulance run, Councilman McCullough's mind is on handy dip.
It was. Between the crying, between both episodes.
And then number three, on a more serious note, and Councilman Donavick referenced this, but, you know, he said five minutes. I think it's actually quicker than that. It's amazing when you're in that burn chamber, which I think you guys said was like a 600-square-foot room. It's incredible how quickly it gets pitch black in there. And I just, it's a reminder to me, and I'll remind everybody here, if you don't have it already, get an emergency plan with your family. Because when you experience how quickly that house fills up, I don't know how anybody gets out. So just a friendly reminder.
And if I could just have one more moment here, you know, October is Fire Safety Month. We will be having our Fire Safety Open House at Station 3, Seven Mile and Wayne Road, on Saturday, the 15th. So please come out, learn more about fire safety, have a plan to get out, check your smoke detectors.
What time?
Be from 10 to 2.
I think Mr. McCullough had a comment?
Yeah, just, the joke at first is, so we all had to be fitted with the masks before we did this. And I was told, you know, I had a nice beard going and I said, they said, guys, you gotta shave it. So I do appreciate that because, I mean, not only we're walking in the boots, but I think I had the image just for, you know, probably a week and I appreciate everything you guys did. On a serious note, knowing the technology that our fire department is equipped with, matters of seconds, minutes, response times go into everything. And knowing that, as Councilmember Morgan said, the best in the world, knowing the stuff that they have and the training that you guys have and the professionalism, you know, just, I know we were going through it and it was kind of funny to have some elected officials, you know, filling in for the boots but dragging, you know, 175-pound, you know, fake person down steps and stuff. But knowing that these guys have to do that for training each and every day, these are the people that are coming out and putting their lives on the line to save our community. For that, hugely appreciated. On probably behalf of everybody in here and the citizens, we appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman.
Thank you again, Chief. We appreciate everything and you know if there's anything we can do, you have our support.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, everyone. Good night.
Good night. At this time, I'd like to call down Ms. LaShawn Thomas, who's our Director of Government Affairs. And she's going to give us a little update about some actions that's going on at City Hall this week.
Thank you, President Jolly, and good evening, members of council. I just want to remind residents that Livonia City Hall will be closed to the public tomorrow, Thursday, October 6, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. as the city conducts a large-scale emergency preparedness exercise. Members of the public will not be permitted to enter City Hall while the drill is taking place. There will be signs all around the Civic Center campus indicating the temporary closure. City Hall will reopen at 1:00 p.m. at the conclusion of the exercise. The public is advised that an increase in first responder presence outside City Hall will accompany the drill. And there will also be some increased activity possibly at Trinity Health Livonia Hospital as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. And Ms. Nash?
I just want to add to that, with City Hall being closed tomorrow, that if you need to come in to get an absentee ballot tomorrow, please come in after 1:00. The City Hall will be closed and we will not be able to issue any ballots in the morning.
Thank you very much. At this time, the council has set aside 30 minutes for audience communication. Audience communication is limited to any, well, it's only limited to, saying that wrong. You can speak to any item that is not on the agenda this evening. You will have three minutes per person to speak until we exhaust the 30 minutes that's been set aside at the beginning of the meeting. If we have people who would like to speak, who are not able to speak in the first 30 minutes at the beginning of the meeting, we will hold an additional session of audience communication for those who have not been able to speak at the end of the meeting so that they can share their comments as well. I would ask that you direct all of your comments to me as the chair of the meeting and that we keep things civil and respectful as best as we can. With that being said, Sister, welcome. Good evening.
Thank you, President Jolly, and good evening, everyone. I've been invited by one of the citizens to leave the prayer, saying that she had checked it out with someone. And so my address is to God. Praise to you, good, loving, and compassionate God. We come in thanksgiving that you have called us to know, love, and serve you as a family, as brothers and sisters of one another, as we continue our life journey at this moment in time. Help us to remember that if we put you first in our lives and strive to do your will in all things at all times, we will honor one another and do all we can to make our families and homes, our places of work and commerce, our city, schools, and our world better by working together and helping each other in this task. We must be strengthened by spiritual food. Help us be open to your spirit and remember lessons we are taught through prayer, worship, teachings, and sacred writings. Help us realize there are times we fall and failed keeping your vision for us alive. At those times, may we be agents of forgiveness. Let us remove walls and begin again. Let us build bridges of understanding, respect, and genuine love for our neighbors, all our neighbors. Let us cherish our roots, giving thanks for all those who have gone before us, leaving us a legacy to pass on to those who come after us. In a special way, we ask you to bless those who give themselves to serve as our leaders, our city council and members, and those who help them, public servants, first responders, volunteers, and members of our community who share in praying and working for the benefit of our Livonia community and for the common good of all. Let us reach out to those in need, those who are hungry, hurting, new in our community, the stranger, those who are marginalized. May we be sensitive to those who feel they do not belong and welcome them. Let us keep our eyes and heart open to God's welcoming embrace of all God's family so together we can hopefully, joyfully, lovingly, continue on our journey of life, modeling peace for all creation, respect for all life, justice for all people, unity for all. In gratitude, we pray. Amen. And I am Sister Nancy Marie Jamrose from Madonna University.
Thank you, Sister. Good evening. Please tell me your name and address, please. I have to ask everybody's address. If you don't want to give it, just, you can decline, but your name is needed.
Dale Campbell, Livonia, Michigan.
Thank you, ma'am. Please proceed.
Thank you, President Jolly. I am here to support City Councilmember Scott Barr and his comments during the September 26 City Council Study Meeting regarding Proposal 3, Reproductive Freedom for All, which will be on the ballot in November. I was horrified by the disruptive actions of some attendees at that meeting who obviously have not fully read and do not understand this proposal. Being a member of City Council does not remove Scott's constitutional right to free speech. Regarding Proposal 3, which is referred to as the abortion bill, though it is not only about abortion, the ads running on media are completely deceptive in an attempt to get this proposal passed. It is not a common sense law. It is anything but. This proposal does address abortion, but it also invalidates numerous conflicting state laws and eliminates parental rights. This proposal actually puts the health of women at risk by removing many health and safety standards for abortion facilities and allows non-doctors to perform abortions. It eliminates the screening of women coerced into having an abortion. It allows for abortion up to, during, and after birth and blocks investigations into cases where babies are left to die after birth. This would make the murder of babies born alive legal in Michigan. This proposal should be called Abortions for All and the Elimination of Parental Rights. It allows for any person to transport a minor to obtain an abortion without parental consent. This will eliminate statutory rape laws. It allows for minor children to obtain sterilization, puberty blockers, and sex change surgery without parental consent. It even allows school employees to be involved in helping children get abortions and change their sex behind the backs of parents. As you drive into Livonia, the welcome sign states, Families First. I greatly appreciate Councilmember Barr for stepping forward to defend Livonia families. Our community should be stepping up to protect women, children, and parental rights, not put them in danger. I would like to thank Councilmember Barr for bringing the purposely hidden details about this proposal to the attention of Livonia residents. Please defend Livonia families by voting no on Proposal 3. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, I gotta, I gotta run this meeting and I know there may be people who support or maybe might not support various people who might be coming up here. We can't comment, we can't clap. We gotta be respectful of people's rights to say what they want to say. It only works to have somebody have free speech and be able to say what they want if we respect that and we don't comment, disrupt the meeting, okay? Please. Sir, please approach the podium, tell me your name and address.
Welcome. Hi, my name is Daryl Smith and my address is 14006 Brookfield. Does that mean they can't clap when I'm finished?
I prefer nobody claps.
Okay. That's, I prefer that, too. But I wanted to say, for starters, that I think you took a little bit of unnecessary heat last meeting. And I think a lot of us, you know, were just kind of stunned at what was going on and were ill-prepared for the constitutional ramifications. So I just want to commend you for the job that you're doing. You know, people watching, week after week, the two of us, they may not realize I'm your cousin, you know, so... No, okay, not really.
I'm sure if you go far enough back in time, I'm sure...
Somewhere along the way.
Thousands of years ago, I'm sure we're related, so please proceed.
No, but I appreciate the job you do. It's a thankless job, but you do it well, so...
Thank you, sir.
I, I've been a Christian for over 50 years and, you know, I don't stand for the anthem. I don't stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our Supreme Court really hurt me deeply when they took the action they did on Roe versus Wade. And that was really about 50 years of precedent there that because they had the number of votes, they did it because they could. They haven't provided any reasoning that says they should, but they did it because they could. So when we get our court straightened out, then I'll respect our flag again. I served in the Air Force, by the way, so I'm not, you know, kind of that typical liberal that is anti-everything. I'm just anti-a few things, you know, so... But, so in case anybody noticed that I didn't honor the flag, that's why. And I think our Supreme Court has set a terrible example. And I guess, you know, who knows what's going to happen there. But the whole Christian thing, I have a set of beliefs. People that are Christians have individual sets of beliefs. Some churches have certain sets of beliefs. And I think that, you know, we need to be honest in seeking truth. Honest in seeking truth. So I think, you know, there's a song that Simon and Garfunkel sing. And one of the lyrics is, "And so man hears what he wants to hear and disregards the rest."
15 seconds.
So I think what happens is we latch on to what we already want to hear and if it kind of doesn't support my thinking, then I just disregard that. So I think I've run out of time, but...
Thank you, sir.
I think if we seek truth...
I have to stop you. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, ma'am. Can you tell me your name and address, please?
My name is Lori Phelps. My address is 18355 Loveland Street.
Thank you, ma'am.
The purpose of my being here tonight is I want the council to seriously consider doing something about the overpopulation of deer in the city. It's unbelievable. We started out with very small, occasional deer. I now have had as many as 20 in my backyard. It's unbelievable. I believe this is a health and safety issue. One of the other neighbors who will speak had her dog attacked twice by the deer. They come up on my wraparound porch, on my front porch, on my back patio. I've spent hundreds of dollars on things that the DNR recommended to deter them. I've got motion-detected devices. I have fencing. I have tried everything. They are very, very aggressive. My grandchildren, I don't trust to play in the backyard because they go up on their hind legs. This is a huge concern. I've called probably for the last five years and I think it's time to take some action. This is ridiculous. Up north, those populations get taken care of because there's hunting season. There's bow hunting, there's gun hunting seasons. We don't have that here. Every year, there's another 10 to 12 of them in the backyard. They're causing accidents. I'm concerned about the ticks that your pets can get tick disease and die. Humans can get it. When they're up on my porch and they're pooping all over my yard and they're on my back patio, I'm sure there's ticks all over the place. And I think this is an opportunity for the city to finally do something and take some action because it's not going away.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening. Your name and address, please?
Gloria Anderson, Loveland, one block from Rotary Park. Same issue. I've lived there 40 years and I would say the past 20, the deer have increased incredibly. I spend hundreds of dollars on flowers. They eat them all. My backyard's like a litter box. Of course, I am close to the park, but still, my yard happens to be their pathway that they go from my yard over to Lori's, jump the fences, and go over there. Just yesterday, on Six Mile, I was coming home in the center lane, a fawn with a broken leg, right in front of Stevenson. And I wanted to stop, but I thought, my car will get hit, I'll get hit. You know, I didn't know what to do. I did nothing, but somebody else must have. I just, I guess that's about it. Other cities have taken care of the deer, I've heard. I don't know if Livonia's ever done that. My husband shoots them with a pellet gun. They just, they don't even, they don't even flinch. They don't even flinch. I go out there with a rake and try and shake them to go away. They just look at you. They're looking for food. So it's bad. It's bad. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir. Your name and address, please?
My name is Ken Kreider and I've been a resident of the city of Livonia for over 50 years. I'm here today to give support to Councilman Scott Barr and to thank him for supporting those who cannot speak for themselves, the unborn. The definition of extremist is a person who holds an extreme or fanatical political view or someone who has a belief that most people think is unreasonable or unacceptable. Gallup is a polling company that is respected among polling entities and has been polling on the issue of abortion since 1975. When Gallup asked people, should abortion be legal under any circumstance, the polls show that this is an extremist view. Over 64-year period, the average of people who held the extremist view that abortion under any circumstance should be legal was 27%, with a high of 35% this year. This year, Americans who believe that abortion should be legal only under certain circumstances is 50%, with 13% holding a view that abortion should never be legal. 63% of Americans believe that some sort of restrictions on abortion should be allowed. Yet Proposal 3 will allow for an extremist view on abortion to be written into our state's constitution. A Helsinki law professor wrote that an individual right to reproductive freedom includes the right to prevent pregnancy through contraception, the right to end pregnancy through abortion, and the right to get pregnant by any means the individual chooses. Proposal 3 would allow an individual with no age limits with and without parental consents the right to choose how they want to end their pregnancy and how they choose, and choose how they want to get pregnant. Proposal 3 would also allow minor children to go underneath, under gender assignment surgery and receive puberty blockers without parental knowledge. In essence, Proposal 3 is a constitutional amendment that is designed to take away parental rights. In 1965, a young woman found herself homeless and pregnant while caring for a one-year-old daughter. In those years, Michigan law valued the life of the unborn and limited this mom's choices to two: to keep me or to give me up for adoption. A few months later, I was adopted into a loving family. I am constantly given thanks that I was given the choice to live. Tonight, I'm asking everyone that hears me to please remember people like me, those who were conceived in less than ideal circumstances. When you vote, please vote no on Prop... When you vote, please vote no on Proposal Three.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am, your name and address, please?
Hi, Deb Christensen, Livonia, resident and also business owner. I, President Jolly, I am wondering, and maybe you're not supposed to respond to me here today, but something that was discussed a while back in the city council meetings and was put, I think, on committee of the whole, and that is what we're going to do to recognize special interest groups. And I, I'm wondering where that is, because I don't want that to get forgotten about after the whole flag issue and the new ordinance that was put into place. I also have a concern, I am a police supporter, but if we're talking about flags on city property, there are flags on every one of the police cars in our city. And I don't know how that came to be, or why, but we can't do something one way and not all the way, so. Yeah. So I'm not sure if you're able to respond to me, no, but I, I am concerned about that issue being brought to the forefront again, and to make sure that we don't forget that as a city, so thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, please tell me your name and address.
Yes, my name is Mary Weigel, and I live on Bloomfield Drive in Livonia, and I just want to encourage people to do vote no on Proposal Three. I've done quite a bit of research on it, and there are many things in it that are very concerning. All the while during COVID, we were told, follow the science. I think we need to follow the science on this proposal. Life begins at conception, and you cannot deny that. And a heartbeat is detectable as soon as five weeks. I was listening to the radio the other day, and someone said, what if we would put up a billboard that showed a woman carrying her child, maybe at three months? And there are some words coming out that say, what did I do wrong? I think we really need to think about what this amendment would do to the potential life of all these unborn children. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir, your name and address, please?
Good evening, Dave Martin, Livonia.
Sorry.
I'm also
Hold on one second, this will be our last comment.
We'll be at thirty minutes.
We'll be at thirty minutes at the conclusion of your comments. Anybody else who would like to speak can stick around. We have a very short scheduled agenda this evening, and then we'll have another period after the meeting for audience communication as well. I'm sorry, sir, please introduce yourself again.
Dave Martin, Livonia. I'm also in support of Scott, he's done a great job on this issue. I also wish to tell everybody to vote no on Three, and while you're at it, vote no on Two. What Scott was addressing was not only the truth, but one of the most evil and horrific proposals ever to be placed on a ballot. As a matter of fact, if it passes, it will be one and only of its kind in the world. This is a disgrace, disgraceful and deadly proposal. It is the devil's work, his mission, to separate parents from children, reduce the population, murder a child after birth, place non-parental guidance, place non-parental guidance with individuals like nurses, massage therapists, dentists, and other so-called medical professionals, the right to take any child and be their advocate to receive an abortion. And this is bad enough, but they will never be held culpable for their deeds. This is outrageous, incomprehensible, evil, sick, immoral, and ungodly. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So like I said, that concludes audience communication at the beginning of the meeting. At this time, we will go to council communication. Do any of my colleagues have comments at this time? Vice President Toy?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I have two. First one being the Hall of Fame will be tomorrow. This is to recognize various individuals in our community that have done some great deeds, as well as some outstanding work, and that will be held at Rosedale Church, which is on Hubbard, I think it's Hubbard in West Chicago, if I'm not mistaken, and that will take place at 7:00 PM. I also want to recognize that Marge Roach, who's a former school board member, a pioneer in her time, was an outstanding board member, did many, many great things for the folks across the street and all of us. She has passed, and I'd like to request Mr. Chair a few moments of silence to recognize a very outstanding woman. Thank you. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Toy. Any other comments from the council? Ms. McIntyre?
I, I believe, he's not here this evening, I believe that tomorrow is Mr. Zalinsik's birthday, am I correct?
It is, I was gonna announce that, and I gave him the evening off to celebrate.
Okay, well, that was on his birthday eve, so happy birthday to our wonderful city engineer, who's a good friend to all of us, and a good friend to the citizens of this city and the businesses for all the outstanding work he does. And just a, also a get-well message to our good friend Rich Skaggs, who suffered an accident, a fall, and is recovering at a recuperation center, but we wish Rich a speedy and full recovery, and we're thinking of you, Rich, and we appreciate everything you've done for our community, so.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre.
Thank you.
Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things. One, I'd love if we could talk to our city attorney about allowing bowhunting season in Livonia. I would gladly participate in that.
Stay out of my backyard, please.
Not sure if I know any city council members that would like to take that up, but I'd gladly support it. Middlebelt Road, I know a lot of people drive down Middlebelt Road in between Plymouth and Schoolcraft. This Wayne County just notified the city that they're gonna be resurfacing about a mile or so of that, which is really exciting news, because Middlebelt is really rough between Plymouth Road and Schoolcraft area, so I know they just put them, put some cones out there, pretty excited about that. And then also a happy Columbus Day. Columbus Day's on Monday, so looking forward to that holiday. So enjoy your holiday weekend, and thank you for coming to visit us at City Council tonight.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to see if we could possibly put discussing the deer population into a committee, so we can maybe talk about the issue and see if there's a direction maybe we should follow. I have noticed that there's quite a few deer in Livonia, and standing, just driving down Merriman Road, probably about 7:30, 8 o'clock at night, there was probably about thirty of them standing off on the side of the road. And then down in Heinz Park, there's quite a few, causing a lot of car deer accidents, something we probably should address and take a look at in a committee, and at least discuss it, and see if there's any direction that we could possibly follow.
Okay, Mr. Morgan, it's my understanding that that is in a committee currently, we'll have to check and see which one specifically, and whoever chairs that committee can call that out, whenever they see fit.
It's in, it's in the committee that I chair, whose exact name I cannot, environment and
Public safety.
Sarah, I'm sorry.
Public safety.
Public safety and environment, right?
Yes.
Health and public safety.
Public safety and health, thank you.
Thank you, I wasn't aware of that, okay, thank you.
So, so Ms. McIntyre may decide to call that out and have a committee meeting on that in the near future, you can look for notices of that.
And may I comment, Mr. President?
Sure.
We will be asking, we will be inviting many members of the administration and our public safety, and we may look into having some outside experts and folks from other cities. I know that Ann Arbor at one time had a call scheduled, but it was canceled due to citizen outreach or outcry, and I'll just say one other thing, I'm very, and I've spoken to Ms. Phelps many times and encouraged her and her neighbors to come tonight, and, and share their concerns about this issue. It's always a very divisive issue, and it comes down to two options. One is to let the deer continue as they continue, and the other is to reduce the herd by some sort of elimination through firearms. So it's a difficult issue, but I'm, I'm glad that we are going to take it up again in committee, because it is important, so thank you. And I will be scheduling a committee meeting.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre. Anybody else from the council? Okay, so at this time, I have to wish two of our colleagues a happy birthday, Mr. Zalinsik, our city engineer, who Ms. McIntyre earlier wished happy birthday to. He'll be celebrating his birthday on October 6th, and our Assistant City Attorney, Leo Neville, will be celebrating his birthday on October 11th. We wish them both the best, and we thank them for their service and their assistance to us. The council will also be having a meeting on October 10th of the Capitol Outlay and Infrastructure Committee meeting to discuss city library improvements, and the Bell Creek erosion issues, and road construction. That'll be held here at City Hall, I think at 7:00 on October 10th. Okay, so at this time, we have no reports from the mayor or any other city officials?
We do. Don't we, on the cars?
It's not listed on my
Administrative response to vehicle policy.
Oh. Right, yeah. We don't have any presentations from anybody, that's where I'm at on the agenda. I'm reading off something else, okay? So at this time, we will move to the agenda. The agenda items are listed for everybody to see. On that, there is reports from the mayor and other city officials that we have received as a council. That is, A, an administrative response to Council Resolution 107-97, that's from the Office of the Mayor regarding the subject matter of city-assigned vehicles and the policy thereof. The consent agenda this night, this evening, excuse me, will be items one through thirteen. Those items were previously scheduled at the study meeting on September 26th and found to be not requiring any additional study at this time, so they will be voted on as a single item. Does anybody in the audience have any comment on the consent agenda at this time? If you have comments on the consent agenda, items one through, excuse me, thirteen, please approach the podium. Good evening, your name and address, please?
Yes, my name's Daryl Smith, and I live at 14006 Brookfield. Now, one through thirteen, are they gonna each get a separate vote?
No, sir.
So you're gonna vote on all of them with one vote?
Correct.
Including the NDO?
Correct.
Just wanted to see where we were headed.
Yep, it's the same practice we've been doing for about fifty years, just to let you know.
Well, I appreciate that information. It seems to me that consent agendas work great when there's not controversial information, but let's hope for the best.
Okay, if there's no other audience communication at this time, I'll look for a motion on the consent agenda.
Some support.
We have a motion to approve from Toy, support from Barr. Ms. Nash, will you take the vote on the consent agenda?
Mr. Jolly, am I allowed to make one quick comment? Related to the consent agenda?
You're not allowed to on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Ms. Nash, take the vote, please.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Items one through thirteen are approved, and we will move on to unfinished business, that's item number fourteen. That is a report out from the Committee on Senior Citizens, Families, and Environment, a meeting that was held on August 1st of 2022, concerning two items, the subject matter of urban environmental concerns and sustainability within the city. And Ms. Toy, I believe you chaired this committee, is that correct?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay.
Thank you, take it away.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Item one was the subject of manner of urban environment concerns. We had Sam Carmango in from GFL. He is the general manager, they offered some comments about how the garbage is going and what's being picked up, and we have a contract to look at next year, I believe it is, on garbage, so it's going to be, we're trying to get ready for that a little bit and get some information. So complaints have been very low, according to him, and they would like to offer us larger carts, which cost a few more dollars, I'm sure, and also considering, as he discussed, their fuel costs have gone up, surprise, surprise, just like, you know, is happening to everyone. He stated that there is twenty percent of less recyclables that go into the trash, so people are recycling, but there's a lot of education that needs to be done on that, and I know the Sustainability Committee is looking at that. Our recycling goes to New Boston, okay, and he indicated that cardboard and paper are good, but plastics vary in regards to what is being thrown out and accepted and cleaned and things like that. There have been a lot of staffing changes, and particularly because they have to have CDLs as drivers, and Sam offered to provide all of us a tour of the plant for council. This item was offered by Scott Morgan. Councilman Morgan has asked for this to remain in the committee of the whole for future updates, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And we also have item two, which is the matter of sustainability in our city. And there was a lot of discussion there about education on tree and solid waste restructuring infrastructure. The commission recommends recycling solid waste in sixty-five or ninety-five gallon containers, and a discussion was also held about the robotic trucks and some of the door-to-door services that are offered by other cities for the disability. And I know that was discussed in our last contract, I thought it was in there, but I've been told it wasn't, so anyhow, surprise, surprise. But Novi does have it in several other cities that surround us, so we may want to keep a keen eye on that, because we have a lot of seniors in our community that aren't able to accommodate some of the garbage with their needs. Is discussion also take place, Mr. Chair, regarding recycling bids for yard waste, hazardous waste, and organic compost? It was also noted that there are grants, if our city keeps a good eye on it, for larger bins, that would have further outreach in our community in recycling the solid waste, and possibly a phone application and guidelines for recycling. Many times, our residents don't understand what can be recycled, does a label need to be on, does a label need to be off, you know, all those kinds of little parameters. Councilmember Kathleen McIntyre would like to get information from the Sustainability Committee while identifying with the chamber different businesses and how they can recycle. I know at my business, we recycle our cardboard, we recycle vases, and our customers bring them back in for their flowers and things like that. So there's a lot we can do to reuse and recycle in business. Electric vehicles were also discussed, numbers were low last September, and another discussion came about in October. Livonia does have quite a few EV vehicles, believe it or not, and there's a city website that's been updated, and I know we had last Saturday a demonstration of EVs over at Schoolcraft College, which was very well-attended. Canton, Westland, and Northville have vendors for charging stations and offer rebates on fees, and also we discussed e-bikes were also discussed, and I think that's about what we discussed, Mr. Chair. Oh, I'm sorry, climate change came up. It was noted to have several recommendations back, this is from Sustainability, sir, in September 2020, high level of greenhouses, temperature changes from 1950, just a few years before I was born, and 2010, sir, showed a one-degree seasonal increase. So the committee is very busy, and the members on it are just awesome. Thank you for appointing all of us.
Thank you, Vice President Toy.
And that's to be left in committee, sir.
I assume so.
Yes.
Everybody in the audience should know that Ms. Toy has been a long champion of recycling programs, and I believe started the first recycling program in Livonia back when she was a Bentley Bulldog. So this has been a lifelong effort on her part, and she's always on top of us and on top of the city, and
Thank you, sir.
She's trying to make, make sure we leave less of a mark
Yes, sir.
in regards to this particular area. With that being said, that concludes our scheduled agenda for this evening. We will go back to audience communication. Same rules apply. We have an opportunity for people in the audience to come up and comment for three minutes. Ms. McIntyre, as you've noticed, is taking the time, and she is giving a fifteen-second warning as your time concludes. Good evening, ma'am, your name and address, please?
My name is Sydney. I prefer not to give my address. So I just wanted to say that I was commending the discussion on Proposal Three, because I think there's been a lot of dishonesty coming from this proposal, and the proposal is, I think, a cheap, dishonest, and misleading way to sneak a lot of extremity, extremity into our amendment, our constitution. And I think one thing I wanted to do is dispel some lies that are being said. So if Proposal Three, if you vote no to Proposal Three, ectopic pregnant So if Proposal 3, if you vote no to Proposal 3, ectopic pregnancies and miscarriages are still covered, they're still protected, that's not going to go away, so I think that that's a big lie that's being promoted. Also, a lot of people say that this proposal will allow us to go back to Roe. That's a lie. This is way more extreme than Roe, and I think that's another misleading way for people to try and get the yes votes. So I think Roe, Roe herself would have been disgusted because Roe was supposed to be 12 weeks. This is now allowing up to nine months. So again, another lie. And I also want to say, if you're going to vote yes, I think you should be intellectually honest, and you should watch what an abortion is. You should also look at photos of what abortion is, because if you're going to vote for it, you need to be able to look at it and advocate for it. That's it.
Thank you. Good evening. Your name and address, please.
I'm Penny Kreider. I'm also going to speak on Proposal 3, but also Proposal 1 and 2. Basically, you want to vote no on 1, 2, and 3. 3, Proposal 3, the abortion, which is actually not really all about abortion, that's an abomination. If we want to speak truth, the Supreme Court overturning Roe Way was fixing a wrong and making it right. They do not have the authority to create law. There are 66 different mistakes within Proposal 3 in their, what they want, how they want to change our constitution here in Michigan. If we're going to do that, we need to make sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, and words are not all pushed together. In Proposal 3, one of the problems is that it's more or less about taking the rights away from parents. If you, as a parent, say, "You know what? My son, my daughter, they're confused. We really need to see a counselor, maybe talk to our priest or our pastor," now your home becomes a very hostile environment, and that individual that they talked to at the school or elsewhere could advocate to have your child removed from the home because one of the, it says that it destroys the parental rights. There is no age limit to the fundamental right outlined in Proposal 3. Absolutely, absolute individual rights cannot be abridged by parents, guardians, or the state. So if they feel that your child is going to be harassed at home because you keep asking questions, they'll come and take your kid from you. This Proposal 3 is about abortion at any age. It's about sex changes, so the way they do that, as far as sterilizing your child, your son feels that he might want to experiment, become a girl. They can use the same drugs that they use in the prisons to castrate men who have raped children, raped people. Your son will be castrated, basically, with medical drugs that they use on prisoners that have committed heinous crimes. They can take your daughter and remove her breasts. They've done it in DC. They've done it in Kalamazoo, I believe. They can also remove her uterus so that she cannot have children. Proposal 3 is an abomination, and it is going to destroy your children and your family's dreams and hopes for their future. Proposal 2 needs to go. It means that you will not have to use an ID anywhere when you, at any time, to get to vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Lynn Mills, Livonia, Michigan. Thank you for allowing me to speak here. Vote no on 1, 2, and 3, but I'm here for Proposal 3. If Proposal 3 passes, it will be the most extreme abortion law on demand in all of USA. Welcome, pure Michigan. Abortion on demand to nine months and perhaps beyond. This is not about care for women. Nowhere in this abortion amendment that wants to be in our state constitution does it say the word "woman." Proposal 3 uses the word "individual." The words "adult" and "age" are not used because there is no age limit. Groomers and sex traffickers will love Proposal 3 if it passes. I urge everyone to vote no on Proposal 3. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sir, you've already addressed the meeting at the beginning. Our rules preclude you speaking to the council twice. Thank you very much. So at this time, if there is no further audience communication, I will close audience communication, and we will go back to the council. Is anybody on the council wishing to speak at this time? Mr. Chair. Mr. Barr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, after six and a half years on council, you'd think I'd know the rules related to consent agendas, but I think that's probably the first time I've asked to speak on a consent agenda, so President Jolly was totally right in telling me I shouldn't. But all I was going to do is clarify that the nondiscrimination ordinance item that was on the consent agenda tonight, this isn't immediately obvious from the consent agenda, but what that did tonight was put it in a committee for further discussion. Nothing was approved in the night. So I've gotten questions about that. I'm suspecting there were questions out here tonight, and I wanted to clarify that. Second thing, related to the topic that many have talked about tonight, somebody mentioned it earlier, Mr. Smith did, and I'll echo it. I'll publicly commend Mr. Jolly. I told him this after the last meeting. I said, "I made your job harder tonight, and you did a really good job of running this meeting," and I told him that privately. I just wanted to say that publicly. Third, just thank you. I am blown away by who's all here tonight. Didn't think I'd get emotional, but it's not what I expected, and if it had been something different, that would have been fine, too, but just thank you. I appreciate people being willing to speak. Everybody needs to be willing to speak on matters of this importance. The residents who spoke did a marvelous job. You've done your research, did a marvelous job of covering the specific points on this. Many of them echoed what I said a few weeks ago. I'm not going to repeat all of those. I do want to point out, though, for those that still, after hearing all of that, still are in support of this, I'd just like to come at it from a slightly different angle and just point out that even if the arguments against abortion that have been presented so well tonight don't move you, please just look at, this is just bad law. And what I mean by that is, and again, Mr. Smith said earlier tonight, you know, he said that there was no reasoning for the Roe versus Wade reversal decision. There's a 213-page opinion that goes through that reasoning, and the essence of what it says, it unpacks all the mistakes that were made back in the early, it was in 1973, I think, in which the court overstepped its bounds. And listen, the overturning of Roe versus Wade didn't do anything for abortion laws other than return it to the states, and we're seeing this around the country now. There are states that are voting against it, there are states that are voting for it. My views on this are clear. I obviously wish everybody would vote against it, but I recognize in the overturn of Roe versus Wade, there's going to be states that allow it. I may disagree with that, but that's at least law being done the right way. This is a decision that needs to be done by the people through their legislatures. And as I have researched this much in the past, prior to speaking last week, have researched it much since, because I've gotten a lot of emails from people, some of which prompted me to go back and look some things up myself. And the bottom line is, listen, I stand behind everything that I said about this, but I also understand where the proponents of this law are coming from in perceiving those things as untrue, because the reality is, the problem with this law is the vagary of it. And what that does is it creates lots of questions, and if you go out and research this, you'll find people on both sides saying this. It creates lots of questions as to what it will actually do. I firmly believe that the things that have been talked about are ramifications of this law, but there's enough vagary there that you could make an argument otherwise, and that's actually part of the problem. Because what we're doing by passing this law, even with all the abortion arguments aside, is we're taking something of this importance, and we're basically saying, "Hey, courts, figure it out," and we're creating a situation for years to come, we're going to have more and more Michigan Supreme Court decisions that we can argue about for years because there's not the specificity here for the legislatures and the people to deal with it, and we're leaving it to the courts. It's just bad law. I understand that the proponents of this will say, "All this is doing is putting into the Constitution establishing a fundamental right to abortion." My contention is that what we should really be looking at is establishing a fundamental right to life for all human beings, whether those be born or unborn. And that's why, when you've heard me talk about this before, prior to a week ago, last week, and now, the core issue here, and Sydney referenced this well with her poignant examples, the core issue here is what is that unborn? And if you can show me that that's not a human being, my entire argument against this falls apart. But when you understand that that is a living, distinct, and whole human being, it is worthy of the protection of life. And my ultimate goal with this, regardless of what happens with this proposal, is not just that this would be illegal. I want this ultimately to be unthinkable, when we understand what it really does. The last thing I want to say, and thanks for your patience with me, is I think it's very important, and clearly, again, I did not expect this tonight, but knowing now that we have a room of a lot of people that see this the way I see it, I can speak directly to all of you and just remind you that when we talk about this, yes, let's advocate for the unborn, yes, let's have the difficult conversations, but let's always do it with empathy, because I think more often than not, more often than not, regardless where you stand in this, there are deep personal experiences that people are dealing with that drives a lot of the way people think about this. And even when you're talking to somebody that disagrees with you on this, it's important that we're sensitive to that, because often, not always, but often, you're dealing with a hurting individual on the other side. It goes back to Sister Nancy's prayer tonight, that we would just all show that love to one another, even on things as contentious as this. So thanks for hearing me out tonight.
Thank you. Anybody else from the council? At this time, I would entertain...
Motion adjourned.
A motion to adjourn?
Support.
We have a motion by Toye, support from McCullough. I think we can show seven in regards to that. Thank you all for coming out. Good evening, Livonia.